So let's, we're gonna start like we always do. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I have a flag behind me. So I'm gonna get out of the way and stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. So hopefully, I don't know if you want to unmute everybody, but at least make sure you're saying the pledge with us, okay? All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. With allegiance and justice for all. Okay, thank you. And now, I'll probably just read the mission statement because I think it might be easier than everybody trying to do it. She pulled it up for you. So, "The Lakeland Joint School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally every day in all environments." So just a little reminder of why we're here. We've found there's no patron input. So we'll go on to the action items. The first is the consent agenda. We have minutes of the previous meeting from March 24th. We have the HR items with the retirements, new hire, and there was something else on there. Didn't bring it up. Hire date, resignation, and retirement dates. And then the regular and special bills for this month. Does anybody have questions on anything there? I don't see anybody unmuting. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? And you'll have to unmute to do that.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion. Can I have a second? Is it... Does nobody want to make a second? Or do you not know how to unmute to make a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Michelle. So I have a motion and a second. Everyone in favor, say aye, and please raise your hand so I can see you. Aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing and seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you. That was definitely a little more complicated.
I think Chairman Olmsted, I think Chrissy would like everyone to unmute so that you can hear the voice and do the hand raise at the same time. So if you could re-vote, that would be great.
Okay. So we need Michelle to unmute, and Rob dropped out for some reason.
He probably hit the phone. It's right next to the microphone.
Should we give him a second to get back on?
He may have been frozen. I didn't see him make a hand motion either.
I think you can just do, vote with the three since you guys have a quorum if you want. But it's up to you what you, how you want to proceed.
Ladies, are you comfortable with voting without Rob for right now on the consent agenda?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. So everyone in favor of the consent agenda, the motion, do you approve the consent agenda as presented? Please say aye and raise your hand. Aye. Anyone opposed? Oh, there he is. Hearing and seeing none, motion carries. Hi, Rob. You back on? Nope. Ramona's gone now. Can you hear us, Rob?
I'm back on. Turn the door off. It just, it automatically kicked me off. Off.
Okay. Yeah, you're a little glitchy. Okay. Is it okay to proceed? Okay. So for, we don't have any visitor presentations. For staff reports, we have the technology presentation with Michelle, Michelle, sorry, Michelle. Michelle Stanford, our technical, technology integration coach. Oh my goodness, I can't talk. So Michelle, we'll turn it over to you.
Michelle, you're on mute.
So my connection is a little bad too. I just wanted to start with that. So I will probably mute my video. But I can see Becky's presentation, which is my slideshow. And I just wanted to say thanks for having me. And I'm super excited to talk about the one-to-one tech device implementation. Like I said, my name is Michelle Stanford, and I am your tech integration coordinator, coach. And I do have a slide here about my education and experience. But one thing I want to say, in all my experience, I need to give a shout out to Lakeland. We are a small Idaho district, and I come from huge Pennsylvania district. And I have friends in New Jersey, friends teaching in Washington. And I just think we have gotten in front of this remote learning and remote teaching, like, so great. And we are succeeding, and our teachers are succeeding. And I'm seeing our students thrive as well. We've checked out over 1,500 Chromebooks since the end of March. And I just think that speaks to this one-to-one implementation as well because people are comfortable in this environment, even though it's crazy times. But as far as my education and experience, I have a BA and a master's in secondary education from Lehigh. And during my master's in secondary ed, I got to teach at Bethlehem Area School District, which is the second graphic there. And they were actually one-to-one. So my student teaching in my first year of teaching was a true one-to-one environment. Students would arrive at school, and they would check out a MacBook, actually, at the time, where our district is Chromebook, so a little different. And they would carry that device around with them all day. And at the end of the day, they would come and drop them back off. And that was all funded through a program called Classrooms for the Future, which, it was great in the beginning, but because of funding, it didn't last as long as the governor at the time had hoped in Pennsylvania. But because of that program and that experience being one-to-one, I started a master's program with Wilkes University. And so my master's is actually in 21st century teaching and learning. And that degree has led then to teaching in Council Rock in Pennsylvania, and then also in Lakeland. Just integrating technology into the classroom and trying to figure out the best practices in order to engage students with technology. So that's kind of my background. But what I'm really here to talk about is the cohorts one and two. So in 2018, 2019 school year, we implemented cohort one. And then this school year, we have cohort two. Between the two cohorts, there are 87 teachers. And we have implemented over 2,300 Chromebooks district-wide between all of the schools. And the next number I like to put in there because between the Chromebooks, the professional development, the Chromebook cards, and other items, we spend over $9,600 per a cohort teacher as a district. And I like to really show this to teachers, to the cohort teachers, because we are investing in them as much as they are investing in their students. So I think that figure is pretty powerful. Also, as cohorts, we have a very focused mission, vision, and values. And the next couple of slides goes over that. So as a group, with the help, of course, of Dr. Meyer, we have been working on a mission statement. This is kind of the why for cohort teachers. So this is here for you to read word for word. But I would just like to point out that we really focus on different levels of technology integration. So if you look at number one, it's really about the students. The number two is then about those real-world connections and those opportunities. And the number three is really about teaching. So it's not just the learning and the students, but how are we teaching and how are we changing our teaching in order to implement technology? And then the next slide as well is linked in the cohort agreement. One thing I love about our cohort agreement is that it doesn't just say what we expect of the teachers. It really also outlines what we, as a district, are doing to support those teachers. So that's one thing I really take pride in. It's not just what they can do for us, but what we can do for them. This is an overview of our trainings and collaborations. So for cohort two, we've really kind of, you know, failed forward as far as some of the things that fell short with cohort one. And I just never felt like we had enough training. So with the support of Dr. Meyer and Lisa Sexton, we went to a full day in the summer, a full day in October, and a full day in March, which we plan on implementing next year as well with cohort three. And it just allows for more depth, in my opinion. You can see that one commonality is we always talk about the mission and the vision and the why. And then one thing I would like to point out is really not just, you know, the Chromebooks and Google and how to do virtual meetings, but we do try to dive deep into some philosophy. So in October, we went over some articles and some technology-based teaching strategies. And then in March, I did get to meet with elementary. We're gonna go virtually for secondary. But we're just talking a lot about problems and solution, and then trying to elevate it and do some advanced stuff like digital citizenship and more tools and resources.
And one thing I'd add, Michelle, to this, is in cohort one, which was the first year, two years ago that we started, that was from the first levy that we got that cohort one started. And really, it's been about 41, 42 teachers every single year. She has done an incredible job. One thing that she's showing you here is how her collaboration worked this year. When she did cohort one, she did an hour every, once a month on a Monday, the third Monday. And so she did try that first to do, put it in bite-sized chunks throughout the entire year. And really, what we found is teachers were, they got a little bit, and it was nice to have a little bit every month, but they were rushing back to get to their schools on time. And with, she was missing some very deep engagement and some, like, time to process and plan and like, a lot of the follow-through stuff that she felt like it was just not ever kind of coming to fruition. Something that she changed, she and I debriefed it after the first year, and then we came up with this idea. And she's talking to you about how well it worked because this, for her now, she can give you the feedback that this is working very well for the adult learners that she's working with. All yours, Michelle.
Yeah. I can't agree with that more. I mean, I've gotten great feedback from cohort one and cohort two now that we're kind of in a remote learning environment. But the thing that is different with cohort two is just they do feel like they had time to debrief, collaborate, ask questions, where when cohort one, we did just an hour, it was kind of like, what are the problems? Here are the solutions. Here's a tip. Okay, go enjoy your Monday morning with your students. You know, it was very fast-paced with this. I just enjoy having that thoughtful, thoughtful kind of deeper processing. Which leads us to cohort three, which I'm super excited about. I keep thinking of ways to bring in our remote learning now into cohort three. So I'm excited next school year to hit the ground running with those teachers. We have 30 teachers, and that looks a little low, but that's only because we are actually going to go to a true one-to-one model at Lakeland Junior High. So Lakeland Junior High, their students, we haven't figured out all of the details, but students will be assigned a Chromebook, and they will take it from class to class as opposed to the model that we've been rolling out, where the Chromebooks stay with the teacher and they're signed out to the teacher. We have ordered, and I'm really grateful that we pre-ordered because now inventory is very low. But we did pre-order, and we'll be receiving 1,120 Chromebooks. And we will be piloting 62 Chrome tablets. And I actually have it with me because this is my favorite device to use. So it's kind of like a Chromebook, but it's a tablet. It's very exciting. So that is cohort three. And like I said, that'll be next school year, so 2021. And we will collaborate and integrate technology.
One thing about the Chrome tablets, if you're not familiar with them, it's like, it used to be an iPad, but they're quite a bit more expensive. And Chrome has now, and they're, is it the second or third generation? That, and they've really updated it, and they're not nearly as expensive. They're terrible to the Chromebooks. But the kindergarten and first grade teachers, and also students with disability, teachers really like having the Chrome tablets because it's very kinesthetic for the learning. You can see Michelle's showing that to you. And the, what's that thing called again?
The stylus.
Stylist, yeah. But the, we have two first grade teachers at John Brown Elementary that are going to be piloting the Chrome tablets next year. And, and if the, and the teachers, if they, kindergarten and first grade, if we want to do that as the standard, then those Chromebooks that are at those places will move up to other teachers. But it's really pretty exciting for Michelle and I doing that.
Yeah, and for SWD as well, if I could just add, one of my passion projects is I've been working with a couple visually impaired students district-wide, and these tablets have some accessibility features that just give me goosebumps for those students. So it's really exciting. It's a good product. Well, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Michelle. That was really good.
If I could add before she goes off, she didn't want to do her background and history on her education. She doesn't really, she's pretty, she's extremely humble and doesn't like really to get the focus on her at all. But one thing that, we've just been so blessed and lucky that we have her. Her mom was telling her with this whole school closure, like, boy, you picked the right field to go into. It's now coming to where she is, like, in high demand. And so really, her understanding of how technology can be used to supplement what we're doing and not supplant the teacher, her entire mission is about how do we affect, use technology within cohort with teachers to give the best effective teaching format we can? Well, it's perfect in this day and age with what we're doing. She's like, I mean, she's been working 24/7, and we're just really lucky to have her. She's a very efficient and very strong work ethic. So I just, I just wanted to let you know that we are super grateful to have her, and we're really blessed to have her in the district. So, does anybody have any questions for her?
I don't, but thank you for the presentation.
Okay, doesn't look like any questions. So Michelle, thank you so much. We do really appreciate everything you're doing for us, especially in this day and age right now. So we're very fortunate to have you, and we appreciate you. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Be well, everybody.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay, we're gonna go on to the financial presentation. Mr. Wallace.
Well, hello, everyone. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Meyer. We'll have our, sort of the same finance report that we present at other regular board meetings. And then we can have any questions on maybe the current state of where we think we're going and, and maybe building budget for next year. But again, as far as our revenues and expenditures, that our revenues are tracking very close to previous years, which is typical because levy collections and state payments come on the same schedule. We're at 80% of the year. Our final real payments that we get are our second half of levy dollars, which actually sort of come in July and August, but we accrue back to this fiscal year because it's before our audit. And then estate payments, which there will be a 1% holdback on those dollars coming. And I'll talk about that in a little bit more. Expenditures, right now, we're at 65.5% year-to-date. That's higher than last year's year-to-date, but closer to the two years ago. So I think, you know, we're tracking okay. Of course, this expenditure, you know, through March, really, is gonna include sort of normal spending as far as things because we really didn't shut down until, you know, mid-March. And I anticipate through the rest of the year that at least our spending on non-employee costs are gonna be a little lower, even though we have had some tech costs. And there have been some costs with the closures of things that we had to do. But just things like, we're not spending as much on diesel for the buses. You know, there's things like that, but definitely will be, we'll be saving dollars there. But we've had some other costs with ordering some hotspots to try to enhance remote learning and some other technology things and just some half-to-dos of, of trying to figure out the closure. But certainly, our expenditures and those non-employee costs will be down. Our employee costs, right now, we're, we're able to keep, I, I won't really get into details. You know, that may be more of conversation with Dr. Meyer and myself or at another topic, or I'm not sure how she's approached that. But, you know, we're, right now, we're keeping most staff busy and working on other tasks. And so it's, it's actually been a real positive seeing staff sort of pull together. And what can I do to help in this situation? So that's been a positive. So we're not seeing a whole lot of savings on salaries right now. Plus, a lot of them have already been earned throughout the year. But for another, you know, teachers earn their, their salaries over those first 10 months and get paid in July and August. And that gets charged back to this year. So they'd already earned most of their pay, honestly. We, when you think about that, it's just as far as the accounting. But, you know, for this year, our, right now, our unassigned fund balance is higher than last year. You know, that's been the trend. So we, we should end up, you know, roughly, we started the year with a $5.2 million fund balance. I would anticipate we're gonna be ending the year with a, at a similar dollar amount. So financially, we're in, you know, pretty solid shape, you know, right now because we, we had a, a bid in the bank and had a savings account. If, if you go down to the charts, that's just sort of, again, graphically showing our year-to-dates and that we're, the continuum. We're tracking fine in those areas. And expenditures by object, again, you know, our vast majority of our, our budget out of a, you know, $35 million budget roughly in the general fund, or not quite 35, but, you know, most of it, 87% is salaries and benefits. And we're, we're tracking fine. I didn't have an enrollment report because, you know, at this point, we're, we're sort of set for attendance. The, the state has given us waivers so that our funding's gonna be based on the attendance we've earned so far. And, and so I, I think we'll be, we're gonna be fine as far as what our projections for state apportionment are. The 1% holdback is roughly $250,000. So we get from the state, at least our budget was $25 million of state funding. So 1%, $250,000. Until I actually see actual numbers of what they're, are they holding every fund back? Are they holding lottery dollars back? Are they holding, you know, so there's a lot of little pots. So it may not, but I think that's a good estimate. And when you think about it, like, our apportionment, we thought that we would, might get $170,000 more than what we budgeted. So if we earn a little bit more from the state, but they hold some back, that, I don't know if it's gonna, when we compare it to budget, will it really be the full 250? Will it be like that 80,000? Because we had more attendance and we got more state, but they held it back. So I, I think in the big picture, the 1% is not a, personally, it's a concern. It's not good news, but we, we certainly can handle that. I think the greater concern is that, you know, with the economic activity going down and state revenues going down, that next year, the state will have higher cuts and that we will have to, you know, work on some of those issues and try to build a budget and, and make it work for next year. And there'll be challenges to that. But, you know, that's, we'll get more accurate information to you as we get more information from the state. And, and that's all I have right now. I'm open for any questions. And I'll, I'll just mute.
Brian, I have a question. With regard to the spring sports being canceled, that money that was allocated for the spring sports, is that gonna remain there and carry over to next year? Is it going into the general fund? Is it going somewhere else? I'm just curious.
Yeah, the spring sports is actually in the general fund. It's just, you know, accounts in the general fund. And so we could carry it over if we wanted to keep a track of that. Or it could, you know, usually, we just, it sort of all goes back into fund balance and they reallocate with the new budget year. So we definitely will save some on spring sports. We are paying the coaches. Most of the coaches are, are, you know, our full-time staff. And most of them had put in quite a bit of prep work, so we've maintained that. So the salaries on the coaches are there. But, you know, every time we took a trip down to Boise, the travel's significant. You know, just literally $5,000 just for the charter to go down there, plus some others. So we'll have some savings, definitely, with spring sports being canceled because of, we know that Timberlake and Lakeland High would have had several teams, you know, make it to state. And, and the bummer, obviously, is the kids not having that opportunity.
Right. So did I hear you correctly that we're paying the coaches, the stipends or salary portions for them to be the coach, even though they're not doing the sport? Is that correct?
Correct. And for example, we, we've paid the coaches traditionally, like our staff. This is just how Lakeland's done it, over 12 months. So the football coach gets paid, you know, throughout the school year because they really are, you know, look at football coaches, they're, they're working on it all the time. The baseball coach, in the same way, they do a lot of prep work. It's just not the two months of the season that they do. Some of the assistant coaches, that's probably true. They don't do as much prep work. But the head coaches definitely, traditionally, and maybe Dr. Meyer could speak better to that because she's a high school principal, they, they put in quite a bit of time year-round.
Yeah, and the summer recruiting program and training program, they do it. And then I just have been, I have a daily morning meeting with the rest of the soups. And at first, we had talked as a district budget team about holding back some of that. It wasn't very, they weren't very happy with that. But then I checked with other soups in the region, and every single other soup are paying their coaches because even though they're not coaching, they have been coaching year-round to get up to this point. And so they've done, like Brian said early, the majority of the work. They've done a lot of that already. So we went in alignment with all the rest of the region soups, and we paid our spring, uh, spring coaches. Again, like Brian said, they've been getting paid since August anyways, or September, every month anyway. So that's what we made a choice to do on that. But to your point, Michelle, there will be savings with the buses and going down. But we do have other expenditures. Like, I don't think it's gonna cause a huge bunch of increase. We have several distance learning and remote learning things we've had to purchase, also along with some facilities and maintenance things, Clorox wipe, disinfectants, masks, gloves, some other things that kind of have taken the place. So we'll have, Brian will look more at it as we move forward, but it definitely isn't, hopefully, it'll cover some of the 1% holdback this year that we need to do so that we could keep our staff whole.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Wallace?
Yes, I have one. I'm curious about the other on the expenditures by object. Although it's slightly over, I was just wondering if we expect this to be, come further over than what was budgeted? The, down there, the capital debt transfers and insurance? I assume that's what that category is down there.
No, that, that should be the, the total. That slightly bit of over was really just mostly our insurance payment, our, our liability insurance. And it came in just a little bit higher than what we budgeted, that $3,000. The one thing that eventually that line will show is, it's the transfer line too. If we transfer, how much we transfer to do the Lakeland Junior High School roof? So we're, we're looking at, we're moving forward. The most important thing is to really button up that roof so we don't have any more interior leaks and damage. So we're going forward with that project. It, we're shifting some priorities, and our goal is hopefully be able to pay it completely from the plant facility fund. And we won't have to do the transfer. We may have to do some. I'm working with Mr. Ferriola on facilities on that. And we might not do as much work at the junior highs as we had hoped. And we might not do as much work at the junior highs as we had hoped of that four, of the full 450 that the board had authorized to move over there. So we're going to try to just pare down some other projects that we were thinking of doing, have the plant fund, hit, hit the junior highs as a real high priority. And, and minimize that transfer over, um, knowing what's, you know, just the challenges that we're faced now.
Okay, I was just curious, just that nothing's typical this year, right? It's, I mean, it's so fluid, it changes consistently. Um, the other thing I was curious about that wasn't here, and I don't know if anybody has the, even knows the answer to that is, do we know if we, the district, um, will be entitled to any of the federal funds that they're um, talking about giving for any expenditures that we've incurred because of this, like Dr. Meyer was sharing and the, uh, tech lady was sharing all these extra Chromebooks and wipes, gloves, masks, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's probably even more, I'm just curious if, when do we learn that? Does that come from the state to us?
It was just in the, um, the office of the school board's education meeting, and they just did a, um, governor's emergency council meeting this morning, so I just got all the notes. And something I was going to share down later, but I'll share it now, is the federal money that's coming out of the $100 million holdback that Governor Little wants to propose for next year, Idaho is, oh, presumably going to get about 47 million of that, but it's not a one-for-one pass-through, so you don't get to just, it's not to, to help with the holdback. It's only really designated, and we just found this out this morning. We've been assuming that that could help build, build back some cutbacks that we're going to do for next year. And they were very specific this morning saying, that is not what it's intended, it is intended for what you just said. It is intended for the things that we had to buy because of this COVID-19. So the masks, the gloves, the extra disinfectant, the extra Chromebooks, the extra Chromebook chargers, anything that Mr. Wallace has done with his operations team to help support this in our district, all of that stuff, we'd be able to put in an application to have reimbursement, but it's not to fill back in for staff cutbacks that we are budgeting for, for next year. Mr. Wallace, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, we're still looking in the guidance, and I'm sure there'll be more that's coming. Um, let, and the federal dollars, I think they will help for sure, it's just always, uh, it's goofy dollars, I, you know, I don't know, maybe all dollars are good, right? But, you know, they come with a lot of strings, there'll be a lot of rules and guidance. Um, I did, when we had the stimulus dollars, I was working for a district in Washington. Um, but I was actually on the board here for Lakeland, and it was actually pretty complex on how we could spend those dollars, that was specific for special education and actual Title I. Um, and it was, you sort of backfilled salaries when they did that. Um, it doesn't look like these dollars are going to be for that. So, I mean, the help will be, um, yeah, we'll definitely accept the help. I don't think it's going to completely make up for the reductions that are coming from the state, but it will, it'll help bridge some of the gap.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wallace? All right, thank you, Brian, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the action items. First up is the calendar, so uh, we, as we discussed earlier, we're going to present both the 20, 20, 20, 21, uh, next year's calendar and the year after calendars, we're doing two years now, thank you. So is Brooke speaking to that, or are you, Dr. Meyer?
Well, I'll just let you know that, um, this is the first time that we're presenting two years in a row to the board. Um, thank you to Brooke, she met with a calendar committee, she met with district leadership and the K-12 admin team, and then she also met with representatives throughout the district. So she did spend a lot of time, and then she also met with Post Falls and Cortalane, um, and ensured we were all on the same page for the next two years. I just want to make the caveat that since it is the first time we're doing two years, there may be some changes that we present, bless you, um, but that we may um, present next year, but I just really would give a very big thank you to, um, Brooke for all of her work on this. So Brooke, could you just tell them a little bit about that? And let me know if you want me to open them up, they're kind of hard to see on the big screen, and I figured you could look at them in the board book, but if you want me to open them up here on, just let me know, Chairman Olstead.
Has everybody looked at them? Did you have, you had a chance to look at them? Can you open them up now? You, Ramona's shaking her head. Okay.
I'm actually, uh, I'm actually on the call via my phone, I had to do that last week when we did a test run. Um, the, uh, 2022 calendar, the only thing I didn't see was it didn't have an actual graduation date on that like it does on next year's.
Um, yeah, it will, it will mirror that, um, that is one of the things that might have to come back. Um, because we did have some discussion, um, on that, um, for this next year. We decided, uh, to keep it the same because of, uh, seniors testing and those types of things. But that was, that is actually still a little bit up for discussion on that, uh, 21, 22.
Okay, that's, that's what I was curious about, that was the only thing that really didn't happen.
That also has to do with ad, uh, availability at real-life ministry as well.
Copy that, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions for Brooke on that? I have to say, um, I had a little experience like years ago trying to do a school calendar, and it is so much work and effort, so Brooke, thank you, thank you so much, especially for trying to do two years. And then, uh, with everything that goes into a calendar, it's just a lot to coordinate, so your work is very much appreciated on that, Brooke, thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like a motion to approve or deny the 2020, oh my gosh, I'm going to mess this up, 2020, 21 calendar school year and the 2021, 2022 school year calendar as presented.
I would like to make a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 school year calendar and the 2021, 2022 school year calendar as presented.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion in a second, if everybody could unmute, we'll take a vote. Let me, Ramona, there we go. So everybody in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, and I'm going to assume that Rob raised his hand.
I did, I was gonna, I was gonna say aye, and I raised my hand.
Okay, so motion carries. Next is, uh, the ratification and superintendent's recommendation of the soft closure of the school district beginning April 6th and ending April 17th, 2020, so Dr. Meyer, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, this was when we came, um, the last board meeting, we didn't do the actual ratification of it, so we did the closure, but we need to do the actual where you ratify it, um, similar to the snow closure day. So the number two is ratifying through when you put the, uh, closure through. And then the next one, I'm going to speak to my recommendation from that, uh, closure forward.
Okay. So right now in front of us is, uh, I'll need a motion to approve or deny to ratify the superintendent's recommendation of the soft closure of Lakeland Joint School District beginning April 6th, 2020 and ending April 17th, 2020. That's all we're ratifying right now.
Can we have a discussion before the motion to ratify is, is?
Yeah.
All right. Um, it's my understanding that when we ratify something such as changing what we initially entered, we're supposed to take it back to what we initially stated. And I was looking at the minutes for the special school board meeting, um, that I do have a question, um, on. But what we had approved was to enter into phase four of the comprehensive mitigation plan with emergency closure dates of March 16th through March 26th, with a tentative return to school date of April 6th, 2020, after the week of spring break, pending further dis, direction from the state or federal officials. Um, on the Idaho State Board of Education site, it says that we were supposed to be closed through April 3rd, that was our closure date to the state board. So I guess my little, my, my concern is, I feel like what we're ratifying doesn't parallel what we approved at the emergency meeting, that is, um, that was on the 23rd, or no, March 16th, 2020. Because it's my understanding that we needed to ratify that to extend beyond the March 26th to have a closure through April 20th, which is what was on the order by the Idaho State Board of Education.
Chairman Olstead, I'm going to let, um, Clerk Williams talk about that because she contacted the state, so I'm going to let her talk, speak to that piece, and she did the research on this piece.
Okay, perfect.
Sure, so, um, Michelle, what we did, and I think I'm following what you're talking about, but we left out that week of spring break because we were already planning to be closed that week. Um, so that's what I was thinking you were asking about, correct me if I'm wrong there.
Well, no, I, I understood us to close the school through the 26th because then we were rolling into spring break. According to the Idaho State Board of Education, they have our school closure from March 16th through April 3rd. There's no differentiation that we were closing and including the spring break. So my only concern is the state board of education is showing that we technically stated we would be closed through April 3rd.
Right, so when I talked to ISBA, I talked to him a couple different times, and, um, the last time was yesterday, and I read through our action items with um, her, and she said it's absolutely perfect, she said, um, districts can kind of be creative with how they choose to word their closures, they can lump it into all one item. She wasn't worried about the dates at all. And so we went through that, and she was happy with how we would, we had stated it. I went through two different scenarios where we did it as one, or as we, um, have it as two items like we do now, so we're covered, she didn't have any qualms about how we were doing it. Um, I hope that makes you feel more comfortable.
Um, well, no, but that's okay. Um, also, because when I was, uh, rereading the statute thingamabob for special meetings, um, because we're calling the 20, or the 16th meeting a special board meeting, however, it was technically an emergency board meeting, so I don't know if that needs to be clarified. Um, but the fact that we're closing the school without an explanation why, I do think we need to add the language as recommended by the Idaho um, School Board Association that states that we're ending April, well, the order was through April 20th, not the 17th, so I read the order today again, and the order was through April 20th, um, because of the COVID-19 coronavirus or the Idaho State Board of Education order. So I do think we need to include that there because it just looks like we're closing the school, we're not explaining why.
I agree with you on that, and we can amend that wording if one of our trustees would like to do that.
Okay. And, but I do believe the ending date needs to be April 20th, because that is what is on the order. So based on that, I would like to move to amend uh, the, um, I don't know how to word this, to amend the soft closure of Lakeland Joint School District beginning April 6th, 2020, um, and ending April 20th, 2020, uh, pursuant to the Idaho State Board of Education order regarding the COVID-19 coronavirus.
That, uh, that makes sense, that bridges any date gaps, and it just, um, gives some explanation, especially as we're looking back on this in the future, to be able to refer to the specifics, so I would, I would, uh, second that motion.
So Chrissy, we, can we vote on that way it's worded then?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not going to try to repeat what Michelle said, so hopefully Chrissy got that. Uh, so everyone in favor of the motion presented, say aye. Aye?
Aye. And I raised my hand.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, going on to uh, approve or deny to ratify the superintendent's recommendation of the soft closure of Lakeland Joint School District beginning April 20th and ending May 29th, with when, if at such time as local and state distancing orders have been lifted and re-entry criteria has been met, allow for reopening of the district on May 30th for end-of-year events and last week of school. So you want to speak to that, Dr. Meyer?
Yeah, and I have two closures there. Um, I have what I'm going to bring up, that first one is what I'm bringing up right now. And the other one is the actual draft from the state board of education meeting yesterday. So if you want to, you can either click on here in this Google Doc, or you can click on the PDF that, uh, Clerk Williams attached. If these certain re-entries can occur, um, and the Panhandle Health District Director Laura Whalen agrees, if she agrees and the board approves, and we have these minimum school protocols, then there's a possibility that we could, um, go back into session. I also included the, um, down below, I included the, uh, IHME, which is what our state board and our Panhandle Health District and the state is using, um, about state-to-state by state peak projections. And you can see that our peak projection in Idaho is supposed to be April 16th. Um, they feel like the peak, I know that Governor Little is going to do a presentation, press conference tomorrow, he's going to speak about our peak has been flattened. Um, and if we maintain social distancing through May, um, and all of these minimum protocols are met, and again, we can go more than this, and we're not declaring, I'm not asking you to declare that we're going to open, just at the possibility that we'll look at that. So we have cleaning and disinfection protocols, which we've been following already throughout the closure. Um, we identify and plan for vulnerable staff, any medical fragile, medical vulnerable, or staff that are over 60. Identify, uh, for staff duties which require close contact. Plan for absenteeism for staff and students, parents that don't feel comfortable sending their students back. We already have a communication plan that's already in the, uh, LJSD response plan, we already have that communication plan, and as you know, I've been keeping up with that. And then our point of contact is Laura Whalen at the Panhandle Health, uh, District for Region 1. I talk to her quite often. And then, um, so that takes care of F and G. So if everything was to fall into line where it would be a possibility, I would just like to propose, obviously, we don't know enough now, but I would like to extend the soft closure only through Friday, May 29th, so that we can make a reassessment decision, um, at the Tuesday, May 26th board meeting. And if we can make it before, that's great, but that's, would be right in alignment with that last week of May. This would allow for possible re-entry plan for all people to come back if they met the criteria. And that would allow for not only the closure for all students and staff, parents, the community, but there's a lot of positive, not only academic, but social emotional things that can happen if we are allowed to come back the last week. Uh, I'm not saying that it is a possibility right now, but I just want to leave it open that we will reassess that at the end of May, knowing that they are recommending us continue social distancing and all the other, uh, soft closures through, um, and all the other, uh, soft closures through, um, the end of May. So I think it's in alignment. Several districts in Southern Idaho close in the middle of May, end of May. So I feel comfortable with this recommendation, um, that, that we'd be able to reassess again at the end of May. So is there any questions about, uh, my recommendation?
My only, uh, concern on your recommendations with a reassessment on the 26th with the closure through the 29th, I don't know that that gives parents an appropriate amount of time to get their children back to school for one week. If that is an availability, I mean, if we're able to do that. Because we're asked, I mean, parents had to uproot everything and totally redo everything for the closure. Now we're suggesting they come back for one week, given just a few days' notice, just to go back into summer program where everything's, you know, back onto a whole different schedule.
Yeah. And, um, so the feedback I've been getting, and I get hundreds of emails a day. The feedback I'm getting is parents and staff and students are really thankful that we're willing to keep that option open to come back. Um, again, if the board approves this tonight, whatever closure the board approves tonight, um, I will be present, sharing that out with parents tomorrow. So it won't be that I'm waiting till the 26th to let parents know it's an option. I will be sharing with parents, I'm doing a weekly update with parents on Wednesdays. And if there's anything else on the weekend that I need to update them to do, but I'm trying to keep it to once a week. But if this passes, then I will let parents know that the board will reassess it, keep a handle on it and keep tabs on it all throughout May, but that we will know for sure by May 26th. And, um, I think the majority of families will be very happy that this is even an option. I think right now, I, I guess I would say it's a 50/50 at that. Um, I don't think it's a strong possibility, but I, I really feel like the feedback I've been getting from the entire community is please just leave it open for an option and don't shut out the entire rest of the year just in case we can get that curve down and no new cases and all of that. If we can get permission by the Panhandle Health Director and all those other things are in place that please just keep it open for a possibility for. So really, more than anything, it's just a, it's an act of hope, I guess, more than anything.
Well, and, uh, there's nothing in that, uh, motion that would, or in that action item that says we have to wait until May 26th to make that determination. We would be closed through the, in, through May 29th, but we, if something changes prior to that, doesn't say we can't make that decision earlier in May. Correct?
Correct.
Well, I would, uh, I would offer up my opinion as a parent of a enrolled student that, um, that would be a wonderful end to a very chaotic and tumultuous year. I would hope that, you know, we would be able to, to do that for the kid's sake and, um, and just the, the hope kind of helps the morale too. Even if it's a slim chance, the hope for the kid's sake is, is, is a morale boost.
I agree, Rob. Thank you. Ramona, you want to add anything?
I was just wondering, and I'm sure we can discuss this when the time comes in May, that, um, I'm sure that the one group of students, I guess, would be seniors and their senior projects and proms and all those things, if nothing else, you know, I don't, who knows where we're going to be in May. Um, if nothing else, that at least they, given the opportunity, if everybody else decided, no, we can't do it, no, we have to stay home, that they might be able to, I don't know, finish something.
Just coming back together, that closure that a lot of these students need. And like she said, even if we do open for that last week, there, there'll be no mandatory attendance requirement is my understanding. People have the option, opt out if we do open. It's more just for those people who really want to come back together, have that closure. Those teachers want that closure with those students. Those parents want that closure with those teachers. So it's just like Rob said, providing that little glimmer of hope. We may not be able to go through with it, but at least we're leaving that door open and not locking ourselves into a box and saying, no, you're done till next year.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I don't, I, I wouldn't agree with that either. I don't think we should, you know, make anything so definite that we put ourselves in a box, right? We don't know. But yeah, that's all, as long as the, you know, whoever would like to participate, hopefully we'll be there, right? When May comes, we'll be making that decision and everybody will come back and we'll all be good for a little while.
Let's hope so.
Then we'll get summer and we'll just start all over again.
Let's hope so. Agreed, Ramona.
Well, Dr. Meyer, can you clarify? Because I'm, I'm hearing from, uh, Chairman Olsted and, uh, that this is, you know, whoever wants to come back. So we're not, if we reopen the school for students to come back, are they not required to return for the last week if they choose not to? And there's no, um, uh, negative impact on them for that?
Right. The, it already got, the attendance is waived. And if you, I know you haven't had time, but if you read the draft that this is second thing in here, the draft by the, uh, and again, that's not going to be voted on till tomorrow, till Thursday at their, um, official meeting. But they, um, said that part of the thing is that you cannot require attendance. Um, one of the things that I just went through here is absentee plan for staff and students whose parents do not feel comfortable returning, so, uh, number D here, returning their student to school and for students who show symptoms. So we have to basically, um, not, you know, allow anyone who's not comfortable coming back. For staff or students, we have to have a plan for not counting their absences against them. We currently, yeah, we currently are, you know, have, are making plans with individual students who don't have access, um, or have other medical issues going on. We currently have plans, uh, for students already individually. So it would be continuing with that. And then anyone who did not want their kids to come back or staff who are vulnerable and can't come back.
Okay.
So does that help, Michelle? That we have to meet those requirements regardless?
No, I'm fully aware. I, I'm aware of the requirements we have to meet. We have to maintain the social distancing of six feet. If that hasn't been met, we have to have approval from Panhandle Health in order to reopen the school. I mean, I, I'm fully aware of all the other, um, extenuating circumstances or hoops that we would have to jump through in order to open the school, um, back up. What I would like to suggest though, um, is that we could, if we could, um, change the reassessment decision being made to maybe the first board meeting of May. I know that, uh, the state board of education is having a meeting on April 16th at 9:00 AM. And then again, um, there were two other ones that they're having in the month of April. So I just, I think that we would be able to have a clearer understanding by say the first board meeting in May, potentially with another follow-up on the 26th. I'm not trying to say, let's shut this down now. I'm saying let's give us-
It's not in the motion, so that was just a suggestion that we make a final. I figured that we would be talking about this every board meeting. I just, um, it's, the, the May 26th is not in the motion. I just put that, that I wanted to make the final decision and as long as I let families know, the health director does not think we can make a final decision on the first meeting of May. I agree that we should talk about it, but I want to make our final assessment whether we do come back on May 30th at the May 26th board meeting. That would be our final assessment on whether we open up or not. So the motion doesn't say anything about May 26th. I was into the information for the board.
Okay. Cause you're making a recommendation with a specific date, so.
That's just the support information for you. The actual thing, board is just right here. That, that's the motion.
Does that make sense, Michelle? We're, we're not locking ourselves into a dates, we're locking ourselves into the closure dates, but not into when we have to make a decision.
I understand that.
Okay.
Are there questions for me?
Okay. So I'd like a motion to approve or deny to ratify the superintendent's recommendation of the soft closure of Lakeland Joint School District beginning April 20th, 2020 and ending May 29th, 2020. When, if at such a time as local and state distancing orders have been lifted and reentry criteria has been met, allow for reopening of district on May 30th for end of year events and last week of school.
I would like to move to approve to ratify the superintendent's recommendation of the soft closure of Lakeland Joint School District beginning April 20th, 2020 and ending May 29th, 2020. When, if at such time as local and state distancing orders have been lifted and reentry criteria has been met, allow for reopening of the district on May 30th for end of year events and last week of school.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion. Thank you.
Motion is second. Everyone in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye, and I raise my hand.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, next is to the motion to approve or deny to suspend portions of any policy conflicting with the Families First Corona Response, Coronavirus Response Act as described in Policy 1300 and direct the superintendent to suspend any conflicting procedures until December 31st, 2020, when the Families First Coronavirus Response Act expires as recommended by the Idaho State Board Association.
Chairman Olsted, this is the one that was recommended to us by the ISBA. Again, Clerk Williams and also HR Director Brooke Cunningham have been following this very closely on what we need to do. So if we, the board has any questions, um, I would welcome them to chime in.
So, um, am I to understand then that this is kind of a, a blanket statement based on that, um, Families First Coronavirus Response Act to supersede anything that conflicts with our current policies?
Do you want to speak to that, Brooke?
Yeah, that is, it's recommended by ISBA and we didn't want to get into the business of revising policy for this, uh, solution. I'm guessing that after all of this, the ISBA is probably working on new policies anyways. And we, um, we don't have the legal knowledge of it. And so that's, that's up to our attorneys. So this is definitely, um, housekeeping item, basically just to keep us out of trouble.
The, where that language was taken was sent, uh, on, it appears Thursday, March 26th. But then on Friday, March 27th, um, they sent sample language, uh, that included terms such as temporary suspicion of policy and they actually suggested that you identify the policies that you're temporarily suspending. Because personally, I don't, I, I would, I would not approve a motion should one be placed to just give a blanket, uh, conflicting portions of policies. I think that's extremely too vague and it's, it's opening, I, I, I wouldn't go for that at all.
But do we have any idea of what policies that this is affecting specifically?
Yeah. I, ISBA did, um, they did indicate some examples. And so.
Policy 5400, 5405, 5410, 5420, that we don't have actually. And 5450, which is actually vacation leave. So there were four policies that they identified. I looked through our policies to sort of see if we're paralleling them. We don't have under our policy umbrella, the long-term illness and temporary disability. But I do believe that Brooke addressed that when she revised, um, the HR rule, I think it was before, uh, I think it was like in November or December. We, there was some HR issue that you were modifying one of the policies. Anywho, those are the policies that, that, um, FF, uh, oopsies, FF, FF-CRA, uh, specifically, uh, kind of muddles.
You know, and, um, actually, Michelle, I agree. I think it'd probably be a good idea if you wanted to identify those policies in a motion. But I guess I would probably, um, recommend maybe adding any other policy if some, if we come across one. I don't know, can you craft that language? And then that way we've got ourselves covered at least until December.
Right. Okay.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So do you want to craft a motion, Michelle?
Okay. Um, with respect that it's, they also kind of suggested breaking out the hole instead of glumping it together. But move to approve the temporary suspension of, uh, the portions of Policy 5400, Policy 5405, Policy 5410, Policy 5450, and any other policies that conflict with FF-CRA, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act for a period of time beginning April 1, 2020 and not to exceed December 31st, 2020.
Very nice. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye, and I raise my hand.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Well worded, Michelle. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, but to take care of the second portion of the number four, um, there needs to be a motion. I, I would like to move to approve to direct the superintendent to suspend any conflicting procedures until December 31st, 2020, when FF-CRA or the Families First Coronavirus Response Act expires.
I'll second the motion.
Can we do that though? It's not.
No, you can do that because it's only one motion on here. So unless you go back and reamend, uh, the other motion, you can't do, add another.
Add another motion.
Michelle, would you be okay with restating your original motion and adding that into it?
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's a long one. That would save us there and we could cover it all there.
Not a problem. So since we voted on it, what do we do? Do I just spew it out again or do we need to redo?
So let's have you rescind that motion and we'll addend it.
Okay.
We'll be okay that way. And Rob, are you good with that?
Yes, I am.
All right. So I'll rescind, um, my motion to approve the temporary suspension of the portions of Policy 5400, Policy 5405, Policy 5410, Policy 5450 and any other policies that conflict with FF-CRA, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act for a period of time beginning April 1, 2020 and not to exceed December 31st, 2020.
I'll second that.
So do we need to vote to rescind that then, Chrissy?
Yeah, let's just do that to be safe there.
Okay. So everyone in favor of rescinding, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, so let's try again, Michelle.
All right, I move to approve the temporary suspension of the portions of Policy 54, 5400, Policy 5405, Policy 5410, Policy 5450, that conflict with FF-CRA, Families First Coronavirus Response Act, for a period of time beginning April 1, 2020 and not to exceed December 31st, 2020. And direct the superintendent to suspend any conflicting procedures until December 31st, 2020, when the Families First Coronavirus Response Act expires as recommended by the Idaho School Board Association.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Rob. I think we have it all covered now. So everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I raise my hand.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. Very good. Now we're on to discussion items. The remote distance learning. Dr. Meyer?
I just wanted to make you aware of a few things. I, overall, the feedback has been really positive from the community. We had a soft start from April 6th through Friday, April 17th. So we're giving two weeks of a soft start for families and make sure we have equal access to education for all families. Making sure students have access to technology and if not, that we supply paper copies or get them to a spot where they have access to technology. So we're individually, by this Friday, if we don't have, we only have a few families that we have made contact with, but we will be doing some home visits to go up and leave actual letters on the door. If we, or, and then try that first. And then if not, then we'll be mailing stuff home to make sure that we have access for every single student in our district. On that being said, this first two weeks with the soft start, we're not doing grading for this first two weeks. When we start next Monday, and I gave you a copy of our grading protocol that we have worked with all the teachers K-12 to come up with. And we're going to do one final read tomorrow at our K-12 admin team meeting. And then I'll be emailing it out to parents in, in our district tomorrow evening on my Wednesday communication out. The grading protocol shows you, you can see that we're going to give feedback on strength areas, areas for growth. We're going to do some assessments, even if we don't come back, we'll be doing some assessments with our students K-6, 7th and 8th grade at the junior high level. The middle level students will have a pass. No credit, incomplete, sorry. And that is, there's no option for grades in our, in our middle level. And then in our high school level, we have, the default will be the pass incomplete. And it will be able to go all the way into, all the way when they graduate if they want to come back and decide that they want to complete a credit. This is a pandemic. It's a once in a lifetime crisis and we are treating it as such. This is not any sort of normal operating procedure. So we are showing compassion, gentleness. We're showing flexibility and understanding. But we also want to be able to offer grades to students at the high school level that would like to apply to have grades. There are several families that have, really would like to challenge their students more and make sure that they do have the opportunity to finish their courses with grades. So that's going to be on an application basis and the high school administrators will be sending that out to families. We've got several questions back and forth on both ends of the spectrum. We have families who have asked, like, this is really difficult for us. We really don't want this much pressure for our students. And then we've had all the way on the continuum to the very other side of families that I have emails from that say, we want to have grades. We want them to have As. I want them to have more work. I want them, teachers to be available around the clock. So I've had basically the polarity from one end to the other on the continuum. But we feel like as a district, this is really the best customer service that we can do to do what's our mission in our district is to make sure every single student is growing and learning every single day academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. Some of those we won't be able to gauge as much when they're at home, but this piece we feel like we can help with. We are providing as much support as necessary for students. We have, by this Friday, we will have made contact with every student with disability. It's extremely important that because of the IEPs and measuring, measuring progress with all students with 504s and IEPs, as well as at-risk students and students that are not living in an area that have high access to technology. We will have contact with all of those students. Otherwise, we will be making visits out to their house. We also are allowing for extensions on student learning. So if the, if they're at a spot right now where there's extenuating circumstances at their home situation, they can continue to do this learning in through the summer if they'd like. Or if they need, some students need actual teacher contact time in person. They can continue the learning and finalize their learning outcomes in the fall when we come back. So we feel like we have a really good, well-rounded approach here. The other thing that I've linked in there, and then you are welcome to ask me questions. The other thing I've linked in there is the video conferencing resources that also could be helpful. Our district is using the two platforms. This one is Google. And I, because that's what we use, but then several teachers are using Zoom because it has more capacity with hand raising and a few other teacher formats that they like. There was some privacy issues with Zoom. So they were, have some workarounds for that that they're doing. They also are not forced into it. It's optional. And Zoom has corrected, the tech director told me today that they've corrected several of the privacy issues already. So those are just a little bit of a sampling of what we are working with, with parents and the students and staff. Okay. That, I have a little more, but does anybody have any questions on any of that so far?
I actually do, since I do have a girl in the high school. Actually, one of them is doing the virtual academy, so it really doesn't affect her. But the other, my other twin, what, if they're assessed and, you know, because she's doing her homework and that kind of stuff. If she gets her pass grade, I mean, if she gets her pass, how does that affect her transcripts? She's a sophomore. How will that affect her transcripts as she continues her high school education?
Well, as a formal, former school counselor and also as a formal high school principal and helping with college admissions, if she's planning on going to an out-of-state university, I would suggest that she apply for the grades. But there also is going to be a caveat, even if she's not going to go to, you know, highly competitive school. She still, on every transcript is going to be, and I'm sure the entire nation will understand and college admissions officers, that this will be a time in spring of 2020 that most transcripts will have an asterisk showing that the school was, the whole last fourth quarter was completed via emergency remote distance learning platform. And a pass signifies that they've met all the essential standards for that course. And that's the wording for it. It, as far as what it does for the GPA, Rob, is it does not influence it up or down for the GPA. If you have too many passes, it can make the denominator go bigger. So it does, it can bring down, slightly bring down the GPA. Like if they were going to shoot for valedictorian or salutatorian or very top of the class, most of the upper quartile students, I would presume, just in my experience, that would probably apply, apply for grades because they probably were going into the fourth quarter with As or Bs already, would be my guess. Does that answer your question or do you want more detail?
Nope, that answers my question. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Other questions on that piece of it?
So I have some questions. So there, there's actually three different options then. There's the pass, the incomplete, or you can apply for an actual grade.
Yeah, so it's two options. They either need to pick a pass or incomplete. Meaning that if they just go with the regular, the default is, if they meet the essential standards and each course at every grade level has the essential standards. We have a rubric and a matrix set out with what the essential standards for the fourth quarter are. If they meet those, they would automatically get a pass. If they do not meet them, again, we're being very flexible and responsive. Or they do not have access to technology, or they don't feel like they can be successful in this learning environment, then we, they will have an incomplete till they have an opportunity to complete that, whether it's face-to-face this summer or whether it's back face-to-face this fall. Or if they decide next year, in, in Trustee Irons, it says, if his daughter is a sophomore and she takes a pass, then she decides next year, I really feel like I should go back and make that into a grade. We're going to allow students to do that all the way up to graduation. So that's still going to be an option. Then if they want to do the grade, then they would apply and their parents have to signify that that's okay and they would apply for the grade.
So how do you, how, I mean, I understand you have a rubric and all that, but what are you doing to know that this student passed?
They meet, well, it's just like, like Trustee Irons said, he has a daughter that's on Idaho Virtual Academy. We have students that take IDLA. And we, there's assignments and there's readings and there's chat rooms and there's discussion boards. And there are once a week Zoom meetings or Google meetings. So they're participating in that and they're doing the follow-up assignments to assess their learning of the essential standards. And then as far as a final summative assessment, it depends what the teacher comes up for that student. It may be a face-to-face and one-on-one online. It might be a proctored assessment that the parents do or that they say that they can use their notes, that several places online have open notes and they ask questions and they use it in the context. They make sure that they write out narratives versus yes or no and true and false answers. So the teacher will assess how they've met the standards and they have a minimum standards for the pass. And then for the grading, there'll be additional requirements, you know, for the grading if they're going to do the As and Bs type of thing.
Yep. So is there no way for a student to actually challenge that? If this student didn't have access to technology or their home environment because of the pandemic was just a nightmare? There's no way for them to come and challenge that? They just have to take the incomplete even?
No, no, that's what I said. No, that's what I said earlier, the extension. So I described that part earlier. Every student.
Extension and taking up their summer and all that. To me, it sounds like that's a punishment. That they're being punished for something that was outside of their control.
Nope, we, that's not how we're looking at it. We're looking at it as not, probably 99% of our students have already got back to us and have been working on assignments for the last several weeks, even before we went to spring break. So there's a very, very small minority that we haven't made contact with. I'm, again, I'm getting the numbers from the, from the principals this Friday. But for students that do not have access to technology, we've already dri, the bus drivers have already driven out some packets to students for them to have access to technology. And we will make sure that 100% of our students are connected with. Unless they've moved away and they just literally are not at the house anymore. We will make sure every student has the ability to have access to education. It, if you read in the very bottom of the grading protocol, you can see that in extenuating circumstances, if somebody has something with COVID-19 in their household or students just really cannot, at this point, we do have a foreign exchange student who needs to go back to their country of origin. In that case, there is an, there is a waiver program and they can, if the entire team unanimously says that we're going to freeze grades at quarter three, which is when we left to go to this, we can, in extenuating circumstances, freeze the grades and that will count for the entire semester grade. But again, it has to be unanimous and it has to be in the best interest of the student. So we're not advertising that out with people, but there is always that caveat to make sure. With IEPs, every single student will have the opportunity and most parent, I mean, pretty much all parents do not want to just give students the grade without them learning the material. So we're really looking at it, Ramona, as an opportunity. And we're doing a great service for our families to be able to provide learning for them and not just cut it off and not provide opportunities for our students to learn these essential standards and moving them on. I know that some surrounding districts and states are just freezing it and they're not providing any more education for the kids the rest of the year. And we have a lot of negative feedback from those parents that they're really happy that our families have the opportunity to continue learning and that our teachers are still providing this opportunity. So we're really looking at it as, there's no reason that anyone could come back on us if we've provided an avenue for every single student in our district to access those essential standards for fourth quarter learning.
Yeah. I was thinking, and like you said, it's probably the very small minority, but I'm thinking of the student that, you know, might have a tough situation as it is, and then this kind of thing gets dumped on them. And maybe the student really is a good student, but because of extenuating circumstances, I just want to make sure that those students aren't lost in the mix up there.
Yeah, and that's what's so happy about our district. I mean, that's the happy part for me is our teachers are going, I don't, I don't know if you guys have got feedback, but I've got so much feedback about our teachers going above and beyond. I mean, we sometimes even have to kind of pull the reins back on some of the teachers because they're so excited and so energetic and so passionate to reach their kids that sometimes they're almost like overdoing it. And if anything, we're having to pull back teachers to saying, come on, you guys, get stuff out. So we're really trying to find that balance between too much and too little, especially for secondary students that have six classes. So we're really trying to do that. The students that may fall through the crack, we are not letting them fall through the crack because we are saying, what can we do to help reach you where you're at? And if the student just is not in a situation, the principal and counselor and teacher and parent and student, they can make a decision like, at this point, they have enough, what they need, want to just start them fresh next year. That, that would be an individual case-by-case basis. That would be the waiver. If they say, no, we still feel like there's stuff they can learn, we're just going to help them in either summer or we're going to help support them in the fall. It's not a punishment or a consequence. It's really just like, we're here for you and we'll do whatever we can to make sure you have those standards and that learning that you need to be successful at the next grade level.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarity on that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's a lot to think about. And believe me, we've spent a lot of time going through it because some, some districts are not going to be offering any ability to give any grades at all for this last part. And that, we just didn't feel was the right thing to do for our students. So we feel really, I mean, our team feels really positive about us and our ability to do this for kids. So I'm feeling really positive and really the staff is super supportive of it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Um, any other questions? Rating, oh, Mr. Trustee Thompson?
Sorry.
No?
No worries. So are the third quarter grades as well passed or incomplete? Or is there enough information to give the child an A, B, C, D, or F?
So we don't do quarter grades. The only, the only school that gives quarter grades is Mountain View, but it's not quarter grades, remember? They're on a four by, four by four. That model means that they do four classes for one quarter and they've completed the entire semester. And that school, they can focus on just four classes. The entire semester's worth of work is in that. So they just completed their final grades. So Mr. Uzi, the principal at Mountain View, is actually working online with all students, but especially seniors, so that every single student has the capacity to graduate this year and that all students have the ability to get these quarter grades. Because as you know, those students are at risk of not graduating because they've been behind. So he cannot just freeze grades. He has a whole nother set of classes that those students are taking. And they, 100%, they only have one student that they haven't been able to contact. And they, that student and her parent. Um, and they, that student and her parent, um, have been, the, the person they were living with said that they went and dropped them in Spokane to homeless shelter. So we know where they are. And we're trying to make sure that they have access, like, uh, they were going to drive over and give her a Chromebook. And so we're really working on that to make sure there was only one student at Mountain View that hadn't been connected with.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer, for that. We appreciate all the work that our staff and you are doing.
Oh, okay, thank you. One last thing I just want to say, and, and Mr. Wallace kind of started to touch on it. But I do want to say with this remote distance learning, um, the whole, that whole piece is, I think is, I'm really proud of our district and what we're doing and what we're providing. Um, but I also want to say that in the future, we will be talking about, um, they just said in the governor's emergency council this morning that the one percent holdback, they're still working at it at the state level in the governor's office because he hasn't finalized that and they want to make sure all the details are worked out. That's supposed to be coming in this week. I would not be surprised if that was in part of the discussion tomorrow with the press, uh, the announcement from Governor Little. And then the five percent holdback, we have been directed to do a budget based on a five percent holdback. So our district leadership team and K-12 admin team has been working diligently on how that would look for our district. How that's going to look again is supposed to be out by May first. So there's more details coming. It really is talking of a preference for a holdback so that we don't get the money sent to us and then we have to send it back. Um, and we will be finding out more about that as Mr. Wallace talked earlier, like, we're not sure the particulars of one account, all accounts, federal programs, not federal programs, there's a lot of things that are in the weed. But we do, I just want the board to be that we are working on that as a district leadership team um, and have done a lot of work already. And we'll have that, um, finalized and ready to go when it is called for, um, and when Mr., before Mr. Wallace presents the budget for next year. So I just wanted you to be aware of, of that.
Thank you.
Any questions on, on that? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Thank you. Ms. Cunningham.
Okay, was there anything else?
Nope, that's all I had.
Okay. So we're going to, I'll need a motion to enter into executive session for Idaho Code seventy-four, two, that, ah, let me try again. Executive session for Idaho Code seventy-four, two zero six, one B.
I'll make the motion that we enter into executive session for Idaho Code seventy-four dash two oh six, one B.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and second. Roll call vote.
Uh, trustee Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Grissom.
Yes.
Trustee Irons.
Yes.
And Chairman Olstead.
Yes. Okay, so it appears everybody else has left the meeting, correct? Is it just us?
Yeah, and then Chrissy is going to stop recording for this and then she'll have to turn it back on after, when we go to the action items.
Okay.